Good morning, everyone. On this beautiful Monday morning with sound going everywhere. May eighteenth, two thousand twenty, it is eight thirty. We're meeting, our regular county commissioner meeting is being held at the Jackson Madison County Regional Health Department in the large conference room, room eight oh four on North Parkway, right here in good old Jackson, Tennessee. Y'all all look so lovely today. Some of you I can recognize, some of you I can't. I'm all glad, I'm glad we're all here. We'll all stay and I'll ask Jeff Wall to introduce our speaker who will lead us in our pledge and our prayer.
Mr. Chairman, we have this morning a great friend of mine, a great friend of Madison County, the chief operating officer and general counsel to the Jackson Chamberlain, Ryan Porter, coming to bring our invocation this morning.
Thank you. I want to say a few words first, if I can do this maybe without having to use my... First, I know none of you guys run for political office because it's fun. And I know the last three months haven't been fun for any of you guys. But just wanted to commend you guys and your leadership on the job you've done the last several months. I know every decision you made has been with the health and wellness of people like me and my family in mind. And I just want to commend you on the great job you've done. I mentioned Kim and Jason specifically, and the mayor and your leadership. So thank you for that. I appreciate you. Second, I just wanted to make sure that we remember our neighbors in Chester County, that tragedy with loss of four young lives. And I believe there's still one more in the hospital. So just specifically, think of those people and remember their prayers. And I'll pray if you guys know my family. Dear Lord, dear heavenly Father, I come to you with a humble and grateful heart. I just ask that you lift up these who are seated in positions of leadership within our community and state and nation. I just ask that you give them wisdom and discernment as they consider the decisions that are going to impact our community and our families, Lord. And just ask that, that you continue to watch over them. I ask for comfort for the families and the community of Chester County, Lord. And just ask that you comfort those people. And where the remaining individual that's in the hospital, I just pray for their healing and pray that you give wisdom to the medical staff that are treating that person, Lord, that they make a full recovery. Lord, just ask that you provide strength and protection for our families during the next couple of months. And Lord, I pray for those that don't know you and don't know your saving grace, that they would have a personal relationship with Jesus Christ and come to know you and ask all this. In your Son's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ryan. Roll call.
Alexander here.
Arnold.
Yes.
Beckham.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Brown Clabell.
Here.
Brown Scott.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Compton.
Here.
Seaton.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Calvin.
Here.
Hale.
Here.
Johnson Arthur.
Here.
Johnson Barber. Martin.
Here.
Mercer.
Here.
Monique.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Spang. Spearman.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Twenty-three present, Mr. Chairman.
We have twenty-three present, two absent. Do we know who we have on the telephone? Do we have anyone?
There's seventeen participants on the conference call. I don't know who all they are or what their names, but I have the number they called from.
Those on the phone can ask questions. I'm not sure exactly how it's going to work, but they can ask questions.
They can be unmuted to answer questions.
Okay. Item number three, approval of amendments to the previous meeting on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty.
And April twentieth.
And April, I'm sorry, and then also April twentieth. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item number four, the presentation by our county mayor.
We have no presentation, Mr. Chairman.
No presentation. All these opportunities, you need to let them pass on by. Announcement from the chair. Well, you know, we have to say a few things. I appreciate y'all being here today. We've gone through some unusual times that we've never probably experienced before. I understand that coming baseball season, there will be no fans, and the players have to sit in the stands. I mean, that's going to be a great looking side. So, but we'll work our way through this. We may be doing some things that are not quite normal, we're not quite adjusted to yet. And I hope we never get adjusted to this. I'm ready to get back to things when we can shake hands and hug each other and, and remove the fear that many people have at this particular time. But I appreciate all the work that everybody's done in Madison County, the health department, the mayors, everyone who's tried to do everything according to what the governor's handed down. And so as a county, I think we responded to it extremely well. Don't you, Kim?
Yes, I do.
So, thank you so much for it. And we'll continue to do our best to recover from this and get back to normal hopefully in the coming weeks or months. But for all the retailers in Madison County and restaurants and those who have been shut down for a period of time, I can vouch for them. I know how difficult that has been and how hard it's been on them and their families and their employees. So, but I believe as a country, we can recover. And as a county, we can recover. And as a community, we'll recover. So thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, let's remember Commissioner Billy Spain in our prayers. Billy has been in the hospital, and I can't tell you if he's still in the hospital or if he's down.
I think he's still in the hospital.
To the spire, okay. He had pneumonia, and he's really having a difficult time. So I just want to make sure that while you're aware of that, keep him in. Jesse, pray.
That's Billy Spain. Billy has been a very loyal, dedicated commissioner for a lot of years. I know that if he could be here, he'd be here if all possible. So keep Billy in your prayers. Item number six, we have anything on the jail construction? No one here to report on that. Item number seven, announcement from a school superintendent? No superintendent?
Oh, this Ray, do you hear me?
Oh, yeah, Ray. Go right ahead, brother. I'm glad to hear you.
Yeah, so this week, as you know, it's graduation week. Southside has been divided into two groups, and they'll graduate at ten and two on tomorrow. And then at Pringles Park on Thursday and Friday, we'll have Madison and Liberty, and then Early College and Northside. So we limited the amount of tickets to six per student, so that sixty-five hundred capacity would only get up to about twenty-five percent filled. Each session will be either odd or even rows. So the first session will sit in the odd rows, and the second session will sit in the even rows. So hopefully, we can have a successful in-person graduation. We have the entrances for the students in one area and for the patrons in another area. So we're doing all we can to do to create a safe environment and encouraging the wearing of face coverings. Secondly, we've distributed over one hundred and fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand meals over the past month or month and a half during the COVID crisis. And we discontinued servicing, servicing of meals on the twenty-first. But Southwest HRA will pick up after that at the same locations that we were at. They will be at starting the day after Memorial Day. So there'll be a little transition time. But food distribution will continue for the students throughout the summer or as long as Southwest HRA can sustain it. And thirdly, Dr. King has started his consulting contract with us as of today. And so he and I are starting the transition. He's starting to meet with staff and principals and things of that nature. But that is underway as we speak. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that report. I'd like to comment too on the meals being served in Madison County by nonprofits and other groups, groups like Operation Hope. It's served an enormous amount of meals in Madison County. The Care Center, who takes care of abused women, is partnered with Operation Hope, and they do a phenomenal job. And Rife continues to do an outstanding job. So those, those folks, I don't think, unless you're aware of it, you would be amazed at the amount of food that they have distributed in the last couple of weeks. Operation Hope and the Care Center do it on an annual basis.
Yes, sir. They've done a great job. We've collaborated with them to make sure we're not overlapping and leaving any gaps. So we've worked well with them. Matthew Marshall with United Ways helped coordinate all of us as we get together to tackle these issues. Thanks for mentioning those, Chairman.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Is that everything? All right.
That's everything from me. I'm done.
Thank you. We move on. To number eight, report from the county officials standing special committees, all business action thereof by this board. Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mercer.
I'd like to make the report for the insurance committee. Currently, we're drawing on dollars, two million, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. I'm sorry, two million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty thousand. This is up for profits, two hundred thousand since last month. The insurance committee also would like to recommend that life benefits to the utilization of the county. That, well, we've been funding, that at this time, we'd like to accommodate that funding of the course of the petition of the county. Another thing that we have is the insurance committee recommend that our property committee, which is our, that we have, we have an insurance agent that's been assigned to handle the insurance claims and follow, to follow up with the insurance company, make sure everything's going correctly. He has not been performing and executing. Mike, Mike has been doing that, doing that work. And the insurance company recommended that we accommodate his service. Mike has worked before with the insurance companies, and he's been filling in and taking care of the claims and all and following up. So we make this recommendation that the agent be terminated at this point. I didn't get a vote on the first items to add with the LIF Wellness Center. So I guess at this time, we'll ask a vote on that.
What are we voting on?
The one in, a LIF Wellness facility utilization by the county.
Everybody else have anything voting on?
To accommodate that, that contract. And we have thirty days to end it.
Everybody understand what you're voting on?
I know.
Tony, you want to go over that?
So what Commissioner Mercer is talking about, you know, we have a contract with the LIF Wellness Center that pays twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per employee that is a member with the LIF. And currently, that contract, it averages about, oh, well, it averages five thousand four hundred and so dollars a month. So it's trying to work around five thousand, really about eight thousand dollars according to having your membership of fifty times. So what we discussed in the insurance committee meeting was to cancel that contract that they drew up first. And that would be a savings of about sixty-four thousand dollars.
We have a discussion?
I'd like, I have a question before.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
To the motion. You're saving sixty-four thousand dollars a year on, on a contract. But if I'm correct in what Mr. Mercer said, you had an increase to your insurance fund of about two hundred and...
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand.
And a lot of times, now I don't know whether, whether you're equating that with fewer injuries, fewer problems, medical problems or anything with the employees using the LIF Center. But that's something I think you might want to look into. And rather than to terminate that contract, if that be the case, there is a big benefit in still allowing the employees of Madison County to use that LIF Center. So I would like to make a motion that we continue the contract with the LIF Center.
If it's in, I'll, I'll second.
I have a motion in second to continue with the contract.
Mr. Chairman, you've already got a motion on the floor to discontinue the contract. So I think you have to address that. A vote against the proposal from the committee would in effect be a vote for what Commissioner Pearson is asking for.
Tony, would you go over a little bit of how that contract has been utilized and the reason that the committee chose to terminate it?
Okay, I'm trying to think some numbers off the top of my head here. We probably, okay, the contract or the agreement that we have is if an employee goes at least one time a month, at least one time a month to the LIF, then we'll pay for their monthly membership. We had in February, and I'm going to go back to February of just the last kind of February month that we had in March, the numbers cut shorter because of the COVID nineteen, then fewer people went. We only had about ninety-five people go. I think in February, we had about a hundred and sixty-seven go at least one time. And we had sixty-six go at least once a week. Right? So going back to Commissioner Pearson's point, you know, there, there is something that if there was a good return on investment that you could put, put your finger on, I think that makes sense. So we, we don't really have what that return is for the fifty-four hundred a month.
That was the reason that the insurance committee voted not to continue that. That was not a hundred percent vote. I think Commissioner Mercer voted in opposition to that. I mean, we were like, four votes for, one opposed on the insurance committee commission. I believe that was correct, wasn't it?
Oh, you're correct.
I mean, the vote from the insurance committee, it was not a hundred percent.
No, no, it wasn't a hundred percent. It was...
Four to one, I believe.
Four to one, right. One, one opposition, yes.
Right. Who stood up first?
Is this something we can, I mean, obviously bring back? It's not like this is done where if we discontinue this contract, is that just for this one year for the next budget cycle? Or is it, is it discontinuing it for a short term or just the one-year cycle?
Because the contract, when, when did, when did it terminate, when did it end, this year? The contract began now.
Actually, it's got October first.
October first.
They put their, I think they changed the contract this past year to October first. Our date would actually end that year.
Okay, so the contract, if we vote, if we voted terminated, we got thirty days to, we have, if we vote today terminated, thirty days from now when it's terminated. So if they want to fill out this year, we're already having contracts only for October through October. And the new contract starts in November.
Was the answer that this contract is terminated in October, correct?
Yeah, it's starting in October. Last, last quarter.
They won't contract, they won't end in October, they ain't. And we voted on the date, the end thirty days from now.
The end is thirty days from now.
The motion that came out of the insurance committee was to end effective July first. So take a brief, I'll just...
July one. Commissioner Bratton? Commissioner Bratton?
At the time we entered into the contract, we were given all the benefits would be for employees and the interest of employees. In the report, I'm not hearing anything that has changed in that. All I'm hearing is the monetary impact, which is important. But the thing is, if employees were important and if they're interested, and if this was so right for them then, why is it not now? Speaking to the committee or anybody who has some insight on that. Because the report said nothing about anything else.
Commissioner Taylor?
I'm sorry. You know, being a part of the budget committee and looking at the numbers and some of the numbers that are coming from the state, I think we're going to have to make some hard decisions this year that we'll come back and reevaluate next year, you know. Now, I agree, this could be, you know, a really good thing for the employees. But if we keep spending money and we're forced to lay employees off, what good is it going to do them if they don't have a job? So we're looking at some significant revenue issues coming our way, gentlemen. And there's a, we've got to look at everything across the board. And some things we're going to have to do away with that we're going to want to bring back next year. Hopefully, after this thing's gone, we kind of get back to normal. But we can't keep spending money as usual. I think the state numbers for the last three months of this year, this fiscal year's sales tax is going to be down eight hundred and fifty-five million dollars. So ours is going to be down.
Commissioner Bratton?
Yeah, I was going to say, from the committee's standpoint, we looked at it. Tony kind of alluded to this. You had a hundred or so that went one time, which means their contract with us, our agreement with employees is that if you go at least once, we'll pay for it. So it seems like there's a large number going once just to keep it, but they're not necessarily utilizing it for the benefit of their own health. Now, say that they're not, I can't make that judgment call. But if you go once a month when it's open the full month, then we felt like that is not a... At this point in time, like Mr. Ta, Commissioner Taylor just referred to, from making a decision, we felt like it was important to focus on the most, you know, the most important things that we're going to be looking at. And this is a, it is a great benefit to those that use it, but it's a luxury benefit. And when things are great and we have the money for it, we felt like, yeah, this is a really good benefit to offer. If things are tight and we feel like we don't have the money for it, then it didn't seem like it made a lot of sense to, to put that on the taxpayers of Madison County for roughly sixty employees using it multiple times.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are talking about a Wellness Center. And this Wellness Center is about people's health. And we going to cut that out. It eliminates people going trying to stay in shape and, and fit. So you go save on one end, but it's on the other. Still got to pay the insurance if you go to the hospital and get sick. So in my opinion, I think we make a terrible mistake. The one that goes, it benefits them. And everybody has the opportunity. All of them I don't want to go, but they want to have the opportunity to go. To go, then I think we should allow it to happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Tony, thank you, Chairman. Did you say that we, we pay twenty-two dollars per month for... Person, person? Okay. If anything in there where if they don't go a certain number of days, that they would have to pay? Do we have it? Okay.
If they don't?
Would that, I mean, would that work where if say they didn't go a certain number of times, they would pay?
So currently, if they don't go at all, they're taken off the membership list. If they go at least once during the month, they pay them.
Okay. Could we not change that where that you have to go at least ten times? We're not saying that because my wife, we're from Tennessee, healthcare. And she, and she, if she go at least ten times, they pay. She don't pay that. She go every day, but she got to work. So, but you have to go at least ten times. If you don't, then they take all your checks. So could we not do something just where if, if they didn't go, say, at least ten times, that they would have to pay and not...
This body can do just pretty much anything they want to do. So if they want it to be ten times, it'll be ten times. You chose to do one time, that's what it is. So that just means we would need to have thirty days to change that contract or that agreement that we have with the, with the LIF.
But wouldn't that not make it work better? Where if they didn't go ten times, then they would have to pay? We would have to pay nothing, then they, they would have to pay?
That's the way it works now. If they don't go once, they pay. We don't pay anymore.
But my family, that might encourage them to go more.
Sure. I think you're going to see the same list of people that we have on here. You know, and it's going to be about fifty people actually, yours.
Was it like this before?
Mr. Bratton?
Excuse me, sir. Was it like this before the last, last paper, paper from our state? Before the last two and a half months? Were the numbers the same before the last two and a half months?
No, it's been zeros for the last two months.
Well, that's understandable, that's understandable, you know, and, you know, proof, you know, proof that you say that maybe they wouldn't go. I'm saying, was the participation the same before the last two and a half months?
That's why, that's why I gave you a February number, because it was the last real month that we had. So January and February were just five or ten different.
Commissioner Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question I've got is, is the LIF cost giving us any incentive cost-wise to, if we got this element for our employees to use or if there's no incentive for our cost of our insurance, then it's going to present a different issue?
No, there's no incentive.
No.
I think the motion we're voting on is to terminate the contract with the LIF. It costs sixty-four thousand within thirty days. Roll call.
Alexander, no. Arnold.
Yes.
Beckham.
Yes.
Franklin.
I pass.
Brown Clabell.
No.
Brown Scott.
Yes.
Brian.
Pass.
Bush.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Seaton.
Yes.
Ellison.
No.
Calvin.
Yes.
Hale.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Johnson Arthur.
Yes.
Johnson Barber.
Yes.
Martin.
No.
Mercer.
No.
Monique.
Yes.
Pearson.
No.
Petty.
Yes.
Spain.
Spearman.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
I'd like to change my vote to yes.
Anyone out? We have seventeen yeses, six noes, one pass, one absent. Motion passes. Now, the other issue was terminating the agency, the agent that we have on our POO insurance liability and property. Mike has been, Mike Winslow has been handling that. And so we'll be going direct. The increase, if I'm correct on the numbers, I believe, was ninety thousand for this coming year.
Well, we saved sixty thousand.
We'll save sixty thousand.
But then you said we...
You got a ninety thousand... You got a ninety thousand dollar? Got a ninety thousand dollar increase that we'll have on our insurance policy. But we'll save sixty thousand by letting Mike Winslow handle it and going direct with the POO. So that's what you're voting on. What you're doing, you're doing away with an insurance agent that basically Mike Winslow has been doing most of the work. Any questions about that? Roll call. Mercer, you wanna say anything else?
Bobby.
You wanna say anything else?
No, no.
Okay.
Alexander?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Franklin?
I pass.
Brown Claudel?
Yes.
Brown Scott?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Johnson Arthur?
Yes.
Johnson Barber?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mercer?
Yes.
Monique?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Spang? Spearman?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Twenty-three yeses, one pass, one absent. Motion passes. Commissioner Mercer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Taylor.
The nonprofit committee met last week to discuss two things. Uh, the first being the fact that we are not gonna be bringing a recommendation to this body on how to divvy out the revenue for nonprofits, because there won't be any assigned. And so, I know it's in a, we don't have to go over the details of the situation we're in, but that's one thing we handled. Uh, the next thing was to fill, to bring a recommendation to fill Commissioner Brown's vacant seat. And we have a recommendation from the committee to fill that seat with Commissioner Doug Stevenson. That's a committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, needed discussion. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a nomination of Mr. Commissioner Ellison.
We have two nominations, Commissioner Stevenson, Commissioner Ellison. Any other nominations? Roll call.
Alexander?
Pass. Pass.
Arnold?
Pass.
Beckman?
Stevenson.
Franklin?
Ellison.
Brown Claudel?
Ellison.
Brown Scott?
Stevenson.
Bryan?
Stevenson.
Bush?
Stevenson.
Compton?
Stevenson.
Deacon?
Stevenson.
Ellison?
Ellison.
Calvin?
Stevenson.
Stevenson.
Hale?
Stevenson.
Johnson Arthur?
Stevenson.
Johnson Barber?
Stevenson.
Martin?
Ellison.
Mercer?
Ellison.
Monique?
Ellison.
Pearson?
Ellison.
Petty?
Stevenson.
Spang? Spearman?
Ellison.
Stevenson? Stevenson. Taylor?
Stevenson.
Walt?
Stevenson.
Anyone want to change their vote? Fourteen for Stevenson, eight for Ellison, two pass.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm a member of the committee, uh, the board. If Mr. Stevens, the chairman of the budget committee, and he being on this committee, is that a conflict of interest?
You got any? I would not think so, but.
Um, if you're asking.
I mean, the budget comes to, I mean, the budget committee comes to the nonprofit, or the profit comes to the budget committee to make a recommendation that whatever, and he's on the budget committee, he gonna.
I think the reason he was nominated for the budget, from the nonprofit, because he was on the budget committee, he has a greater knowledge of the budget than most of us here at West Ray.
That's exactly right, sir. That's what I was gonna, uh, we discussed it as a committee, and we needed someone to sit on the committee that had the knowledge of the budget, that when it comes time, because these requests that are, that are made from the nonprofit committee are important. These nonprofits, you know, just because we're not funding these requests doesn't mean that these needs are gonna go unnoticed. Uh, and so, the requests are gonna continue to come in throughout the year, and they're gonna come to the full body, or they're gonna come to financial management. And so, we needed Doug to, at his knowledge of the budget, to be there to support us as we, I'm sure, will field more requests throughout the year. So that was the thought behind it.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir. Um, it thrust all the intent, going back to the grant review committee when it was called that, anything else, was not about the budget committee having a pipeline into the nonprofit committee. If there's a specific need, a social work, somebody interacts with these agencies, and, and all the different parts of the county, such as the west part, which receives very low, uh, return on the tax dollars, that is what the emphasis should be, that's what, you know, the committee, uh, purposes not to walk step by step to finance committee, because they tell, they actually mandate how much money is available. And so, that, that logic does not sit with me.
I still think that's a conflict of interest, and I don't think that we need to stack that board like that. That the budget committee operate like they operate, and we should put somebody else on it. If only else, we'd be putting somebody else on the dollar that, uh, on that budget committee. I don't think Stevens should be on there.
Commissioner Brown.
Uh, yes. Being on the nonprofit committee, we have a list of all the different nonprofits and their board of directors, and Mr. Ellison's life is on the board of directors for a particular nonprofit. I have great respect for him, but I do feel like that itself is a conflict.
All right, a good point. Well, I appreciate any of you who wanted to serve on any committee, because we come to many committee meetings, we don't even have a forum, so when you show up, that shows you have an interest, but I appreciate your interest and time. Uh, we got a lot of tough decisions to make this year. This is the beginning process of it, and we all have things we wanna see happen, some things we're not gonna be able to fund. Commissioner Ellison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Brown, see, my wife's on board of committee?
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit. Uh, that's conflict of interest, right?
I'm just saying, is it a conflict?
Yes, it's a conflict of interest. But Mr. Stevens is on the budget committee, it's also a conflict of interest. So, conflict of interest is a conflict of interest. So, someone else need to be on.
I would add, just real quick, the first year I came on board the nonprofit committee, Mr. Taylor, who sat on the budget committee, was there in that seat, that now is filled by Commissioner Bush. And no one seemed to have a problem with someone on the budget committee serving on the nonprofit. I think it's a good idea for someone to have the knowledge of the budget, to be a part of those numbers. That was the only recommendation. With that, I would ask that conversation cease and that the voting has already occurred.
Any other committee reports? Ready to move on? Out of number nine, a report from the county mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I do want to remind everybody in the meeting here that we do have, I think, about forty people, is that correct? On the conference call?
There are eighteen right now.
Eighteen people on the conference call, so if you're gonna speak, please wait for the microphone so those folks can hear what you said in
Yeah.
in the room. It would help a lot. That you asked about the jail committee, I went to the update meeting, I believe it was first of last week or the week before. Uh, and at least the, the schedule, we're still moving along, but the schedule has been moved to somewhere, my memory is sometime like September the first of next year, because so many weather days over the last, um, six months, eight months, that, that had been moved. And I mean, the, the other thing we, I mean, that I've been doing that's totally related ninety-nine percent with the virus. We, the lady standing here next to me, um, we rely almost exclusively on her and western C. out here in her sense of the guidance and the direction we go. We, y'all well know, we've opened, we've had restaurants open now, this, today is the third week on fifty percent. We had retail open two and a half weeks, and so, on Friday, along with the governor, uh, opening up restaurants and retail to a hundred percent, but still maintaining, um, distancing. And we, we had a, Mayor Coller and I and the chamber had a call with businesses and restaurants. I believe it was Thursday of last week, just to understand how they're doing, how they're feeling, are they ready to move on? They were, uh, and, and they, I've been very pleased with what I've seen and heard from our businesses, our restaurants, you name it, in the sense of what they're doing, preparations they're making to get back into business, but also to have an environment that their customers are comfortable coming into. And it is, as, as one restaurant owner said, it's up to us to make you comfortable coming in our place of business. And, and that is, that is the case. Now, you know, the thing about this virus, nobody knows when it's gonna end, or what it's gonna look like. I, I mean, I think that our cases will continue to go up just because of the nature of the virus. It's not, it's, it's not gonna quit, but what we saw in our numbers, and Kim can verify this, over the last two and a half weeks, when our restaurants have been open, our businesses have been open, our numbers, they're never the same, but they have not jumped to any extent to say to us that we don't need to open more businesses. And we're moving towards that. The governor also came up with some guidance on Friday, and I can't list them all for you, but I do know there are other businesses that, that he is okay in opening up, there again with social distancing and things like that. I do believe the only way we are going to continue, what I feel like we've got a successful track record now, right now, is if we continue wearing these things on our face, and I know it's a pain, I really do, but these masks doesn't protect me, it protects you against me.
Okay.
And that's just a consideration that I think we need to give to our fellow men we see in the grocery store, or a restaurant, or retail business. It hangs up to you, it's not required, but no doubt about it. But we, we've got to maintain this, or not maintain, we've got to continue to hold the growth of this virus down. The, uh, and I think you're gonna talk in a few minutes, I wish, Kim. Anyway, I want you to talk, I'd like for Kim to just kinda tell you, from a health standpoint, how she feels about where we're going and all like that. So, but if we can continue to wear these masks, if we can continue to keep our distances, wash our hands, I think we can continue to open businesses, and hopefully, before very few, many other weeks, we can be back to where we were in the sense of opening of businesses and activities. Now, it's not, we're not gonna immediately go back to where we were before all this started. I think it's gonna take us a long time. Uh, we had a conference call with bankers last week, and the general consensus of the bankers, it's a minimum of twelve to eighteen months before we get back to potentially pre-COVID financial position. So it's going to take some effort. We all have changed, this thing has changed us, it's changed our neighbors, it's changed our community, it's changed our habits. We're, we're not automatically, everybody gonna go back and start going out to eat once, twice, three times a week, because our habits have changed. And so, our businesses are, you're gonna have to make them comfortable, but also promote their business, because it's going to be a real challenge. And I'm telling you, our businesses have suffered enough in there. So I just encourage you, if you wanna buy something, don't buy it online, go to a local business and buy it. If you wanna eat supper, order it, bring it home, or go out to a local restaurant, because it's, we, we need, our, our small business is absolutely the backbone of this community. So, this coming year is going to be a real, real, real challenging time to put a budget together. There are going to be decisions that we have to make, and y'all made some today. We have got to get our budget balanced. By law, we gotta have a balanced budget. But we're gonna have some tough, tough decisions to make. And I think one commissioner said, this is hopefully short-term, and there is some pain, and there will continue to be, but folks, we, we cannot, we cannot pass a budget that requires us to ask our taxpayers for more dollars out of their pocket, because they're hurting enough, businesses are hurting enough, industry is hurting. So, we, it behooves us to come up with a balanced budget that we can continue most of the things that we've been doing. But it's, and I understand from you to me, from y'all's perspective, it is really tough. I, I really do know that. We've gotta get through this year, and then we see what's on the other side. Nobody knows what's on the other side, and that's kind of the scary part. The other thing is, our COVID task force, or whatever you want, committee, we met every morning for, you ever talking about an hour and a half to two hours every morning? Kim being on that, and I, the chamber, and the city mayor, and there's like ten of us that meet to discuss and try to understand what's the best approach to our next step in these things. We talked about meals earlier. Matt Marshall with United Way has been on that committee from day one. He handles the nonprofit part of our community. And he's done an excellent job conveying to us what their situation is, but also how many meals they've been serving, how many people they have helped through this. The other thing that they did on a very short-term basis, and I believe it was the first of last week, or maybe the week before, they organized an online fundraiser for nonprofits. And you could go on, you could give to whatever nonprofits you went to, you could give to United Way, who would continue to help the nonprofits. But on that short period of time they put together, they raised a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the nonprofits and United Way in our community, and that's a wonderful thing. But our nonprofits, they are being drained of their resources because they are helping more and more and more people. So I just encourage you, if you, if you're able to do it, contribute to a nonprofit you know and you're close to, that you know are providing hope and food in this community. And there's many, many of them, and I wanna say thank you to that. The other thing, one other thing, I'll shut up my problem. Our, I think that Captain Rutter, and, uh, along with Kim's guidance, has done an excellent job with inmates in our jail. And our judges and the VA, the sheriff's department, police department has done a good job to try to cut down on the number of people that are put into jail, or they're so, or they're cited so they have to come back to court, but they're not gonna be sitting in jail for weeks and weeks and weeks. Our judges have been, and VA have done a good job in reviewing cases to see if anybody's been in jail, if they can see a way as far as their sentence and what they're in for, to release them early. And so, we, our population in the CJC this morning was three hundred and thirty-nine inmates. That's up about thirteen from what it was on Friday. But of course, that number always kind of goes up and down. Our penal baron and annex are not always crowded, it's just mainly the, the CJC. But so far, I'll go with, because of the protocols Kim has had Captain Rutter put in place as far as the inmates, and especially the new inmates and our employees, we have six employees that tested positive for it over the last seven or eight weeks. And at one time, Captain And at one time, Captain Rutter had, I believe it was twenty-four employees on quarantine that had come in contact with the other employees. Anyway, they're all back to work, they've been back to work. We don't have any inmates that have shown symptoms. And so, we've been very fortunate, we have not had a case in our jail, and I appreciate Kim and Captain Rutter's efforts in us being where we are today. And I would like to, for Kim to take a minute and talk about what we, what you, how you feel about how big we're going.
As a whole, I think Madison County's numbers are looking great as of this morning. We didn't have our call, so we're still at one sixty-five, that's a cumulative case number that you're never going to see change. We have not had any new cases in the last, over the weekend, which was a good, good sign because like Mayor Harris said, we're two weeks, two and a half weeks into opening up, so this was a critical time for us to, to see if we got new cases. We did not. The new cases that we've gotten, we've been able to pinpoint to a family member or a healthcare worker that was exposed. So, all that's good, we feel good about opening things up and letting the majority of retail and restaurants get back to normal. I know this is a very controversial issue, the mask issue, and if you pardon me on my media briefing that we did Friday morning at ten o'clock, I addressed this a little bit. This mask is not protecting me from y'all, it is protecting y'all from my germs. And I'm out in the community, I'm out a lot. I have an elderly mother that lives in the house, so I try to protect her in doing these same things within my house. Because you, you never know how the virus is going to affect you, and I know a lot of people say it's just like the flu, it's no different than the flu, we have flu deaths, but we also have a vaccine for the flu. And this is a novel virus, meaning it's brand new. There are other coronaviruses, but not, this is a brand new virus. So that's why you see so much hype and so much preparedness and so much intense guidance on this because it's a new virus and we don't know it. Yes, people with predisposed, pre-existing conditions, it's going to affect more. But that's not to say you can be healthy one day and have it and end up in the hospital. There's a lot of unknown about the virus, there's a lot of unknown about whether or not, if you get it, if you can get it again. And with like, with any new virus, there's a lot of studies that have to be done before some of those answers can be, be given. We, we do have word that there should be a vaccine out by the end of the year, and I hope that's so. I don't know what kind of uptake we'll have on it, it'll probably be controversial, just like the flu vaccine. And we beg y'all to take that every year, and some of you do and some of you don't. But I feel good where we are in Madison County, and if you'll look at other cities like Memphis and Nashville that are not faring well, you can look, I promise you, in my thirty years of public health experience, social distancing works. It's a proven public health method. When you look back and read about any pandemic, it's a proven method. Hand washing, social distancing works. And, and that's, I give kudos to our community for doing that. And when you look at some of these other cities that haven't shut down, and I don't mean just shut down, but, but have not followed social distancing, we can see that in some of our cases. Some of our first cases were related to travel, distinctly related to travel, to areas like New Orleans and other hotspots. But just kudos to our leadership, as Mayor Harris said, Mayor Conger, Mayor Harris, myself, James Ross with West Tennessee Healthcare, Ray Washington, and Carl Burgen from the Chamber, and Matt Marshall from United Way, and our local AMA, Jason Moore. We meet every morning to discuss what's going on and to, to look at our data and to make decisions, and they're hard decisions, there's nothing been easy about them. But we feel good about it, and one thing we needed to do was to protect our healthcare facility. And that is critical, and I know many of you are saying, well, look, they've lost all this money, they've got plenty of beds, they're not filling up. But that was the purpose, so that if they got an influx of patients, they could handle it. And you have to realize too, that these healthcare workers have been exposed at some point in caring for these patients. And JR gave us that report, gives us that report on a daily basis of how many healthcare workers he's got out on quarantine that have been exposed. So, there's a lot of factors that go into making those decisions. So that, that's, our primary one is to protect our healthcare system. As you know, they don't just take care of Madison County, they're the larger hospital system between Memphis and Nashville. So that's important to do, and we rely on his information as well. So I'll talk enough.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what Kim and the mayor said. And every day, when I listen to the things on TV, we need to show respect. I use that word every day, we're respecting you when we wear our masks. And so, I'd just like to reiterate that. It's very important because that stays in the air eight minutes, if you are talking, and it comes out of your mouth or out of your nose, and it can get in your eyes too. So just respect your neighbor, respect your friends, and that will, that will help a lot. I agree with Mayor Harris and Kim both. You see, they're both wearing theirs, and I'm proud of them.
I'd like to say, Ms. Commissioner Johnson, I don't have on my mask, but I do respect you.
Well, you're supposed to wear a mask if you, a mask if you respect me.
I do respect you, I'm not going to wear a mask.
According to the TV.
Mr. Brown.
Yes. Mrs. Chairman, I'm piggybacking on the report with Kim. We'd also need to be mindful and, maybe as appreciative as I am, for the new, for the postmen, the food service people who feed us in, in the restaurants, the sanitation people, the nurses, New York has really gotten our attention. When you have that many policemen who cannot do their job without having personal contact, infected, when you have that many persons who are just doing the basic thing of cleaning and nursing, we are blessed not to have been infected, but we need to appreciate them who have gone the extra mile. Because at, at the level that we're dealing with in this pandemic, we have a, a situation where it's a lot taking the role of a soldier. They're fighting battles on a different level, and, and I think we owe all of them an applause because they are heroes.
Thank you.
I don't know what you said, Commissioner Brown, but it was good.
It was good.
Anybody else? We've already dealt with item number ten, we'll go to item number eleven. Appointment of one member to that adult establishment committee. We do have Commissioner Wall.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Charles Purcell to fill the vacant seat on the Adult Oriented Establishment Committee.
Go ahead, you need to have the microphone, somebody can hear that.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Charles Purcell to serve in that vacant seat on the Adult Oriented Establishment Committee.
You have a resume in your packet.
We do.
Any other discussion? Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item number twelve, appointment of nine members to the Environmental Advisory Appeal Board by this body as a one-year term. Mike Budworth, Charles Burr, Jim Holman, Robert Mullins, Smokey Rollin will be replaced. Terry Strout, Chris Todd, Eric Turner, Bark Wall and Coman.
Commissioner.
I'd like to make a nomination that we reappoint these people with Jeff Wall taking the place of Smokey Rollin.
Have a motion second.
Two seconds.
Two seconds. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item number thirteen, seven members to the Madison County property codes enforcement appeal board by this body in one-year term. Tony White, Barbara Johnson, Candy Overstreet, Ronald S. Overton, Eric Turner, Mike Winslow, Bark Wall and Coman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brown.
Second. Have a second by Commissioner Alexander. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item number fourteen, appoint a eight-member to the missile solid waste planning board by county mayor. Approved by this body at five-year term. Bill Douglas, Alvin Jones, John Newman, Hilda Pearson, Kim Tedford, Bobby Weaver, Gary Tippett, Larry Lawrence and Coman.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevenson had a recommendation to take care of, and I'm sorry, I can't see the list on board.
And Larry Lawrence can't serve, but he's willing to serve.
Yeah, I would like to talk to Commissioner Lawrence on that question. Larry said he would like to continue on that board.
Hour and a half.
I would like to get a replacement for Gary Tippett if we have a commissioner that's interested in serving on that board.
Okay. But Mayor, Larry said he would serve.
All right, so I would recommend the reappointment of everyone here except Gary Tippett, and we'll appoint that committee next month.
Appointing next month, all right. Item number fifteen, appointment of one member to the Madison County Long Range Planning Committee by Finance Committee and that committee did.
We didn't vote on this.
You want to vote on all of them except Tippett, I want to vote on all of them next month. We'll vote all on next month. And the item number fifteen, that committee did not act upon that, so we'll take that up next month also. Sixty, consideration possible accepted of a resolution to amend the text of exonerating resolution of Madison County. Stan Pilot, would you want to deal with those? There you are back in the back, I didn't recognize you, but I saw your head.
I know you're thinking, this is the best thing that's ever looked. You have in your packet these text amendments, one is for the inner region, one is for the outer region, and one is for three ways planning region. The planning commission is recommending this to you.
Are you taking three of them or two of them?
It's three.
Three, all right. You have three resolutions there. Any discussion? This is an open meeting, is anyone here outside of us to address any of these? I need a motion. Do I have a motion on the floor? Are there not? Commissioner Johnson?
I'll move.
Have a motion second by Commissioner Petty. Let's see if anybody in the public is here, I don't think there is, but maybe.
Take sixteen, break team together and take them all in.
Take all three of them. Any discussion about any of these three?
Nobody.
Nobody's here? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nineteen, discussion of possible closing Beach Bluff community center. Commissioner Alexander.
Mr. Chairman, we do have guest speaker, woman speaker on this, on this issue outside. Somebody bring him in tonight.
Ed Smith here today?
Yes.
Ed Smith on the phone?
Yes, I'm listening.
Ed's on the phone, okay.
Yeah.
Ed, would you like to comment on anything?
I, I will, I just, I'll wait till hear what the speaker has to say or also answer any questions.
All right. Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, you just saw on the floor, I move, we continue this program if these people take the same foot as others take.
Have a motion of second. Now we're ready for discussion. Is this Mr. Arnold?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
We forward up the way that I think.
Yes, sir, it is like to take it off.
I appreciate, Mr. Chairman and the, and all the commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I have done this one time before when we were talking about setting up the rec center right at Beach Bluff. And, and I know that we've had issues, and, and some people are for it and some people are not, and I respect that. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, just like I am. But there's, there's a lot of stuff that has gone on there that has been awfully good for the Beach Bluff community. And, and it's something that the, that the people out there have, have come to, to love and to rely on, and... Oh goodness. This tech stuff, I, I apologize. I, I wrote things down on the computer so I could be brief and not bore you with a bunch of stuff and not get to rambling, so... As I said before, I want to thank you for, for the support that you've given us, I want to thank you for the past support, and, and I hope that you'll, you'll continue to be supportive. We have certainly enjoyed funding and help from the county commission and the county, and, and I think that it's a, certainly a worthwhile project, and it's only growing. The thing that's happened to us lately is this doggone virus. It, it has really been a problem for us and, and as it has for everybody else, but it shut down the recreation center, and it, it being the only facility that's available in this county. In fact, anywhere around here that you have a gymnasium and a cafeteria that's available for use by the public, anytime it's open. It's open to the public now, you don't have to go in and make appointments to go in there. You can, you can either pay a, a little fee and, and go in and be a visitor, or you can be a member. We have at the present time over a hundred members. These are families, actually. And we're anticipating over doubling the, the membership in the next short order. We've held off trying to do a great membership drive because of this virus situation and the fact that the rec center was closed, and, and I don't mean temporarily, they, it's my understanding, I, I hadn't, hadn't heard this directly from Ed Smith, but, but Ed was told to, to close it, not to mothball it. And in the first place, I didn't realize that you did things like that with the whole, without the whole commission's approval. I think that the entire commission should be in on a, a proposition like that. But it's my understanding that they were told to close it, to move the summer school program, the summer camp program, from the Beach Bluff facility over to the Rose Hill facility, which is not a community available area. It's a school, and it's available only to people that come in there by appointment or, or whatever. So, the rec center was formed to make use of the, of the Beach Bluff school, it was abandoned by the school system in their infinite wisdom and the 2020 fiasco, Vision 2020. And last time I was here, Mr. Verma Ruffin was here, and, and I looked her right in and told her it was a lack of Vision 2020 in our opinion. All it did was hurt, and I, I, I don't know of any good that's come from it, maybe you do. I hope some has because it was initiated in several schools. I hope some has because it was initiated and several schools were closed and, and it really, it really impacted Beach Bluff and, and a lot of the other areas. Vision 2020, in my opinion, certainly was a fiasco. The recreation center is the only quality of life facility on the east side of the county. Now, people say there's a park at Laper Lane and I don't know what else. When I was a young fellow, I graduated from Beach Bluff High School in 1965. So I'm not a young fellow anymore. I've lived at Beach Bluff in the house that we built in 1975 since that time, my wife and I, and we raised a son. He lives in Jackson, works for UPS. So we have been members and supporting taxpayers in Madison County virtually all of our life. We lived in Memphis for a very short time when we first married. But the east side of the county has lost all the community businesses, all the stores. At one time, when I was a young fellow, in fact, when I was going to school at Beach Bluff, I can remember six grocery stores within a mile of that school building. At one time, at Beach Bluff, there was a cotton gin, there was a furniture store, there was a gun shop. There were several places that you could buy gasoline. Guess how many there are now? None. No stores, no place to buy gasoline. The closest place that we have is the Dollar Store and the, and the Beach Bluff Community Grocery at the Beach Bluff and Michelin Road intersection there, Paul Kaufman Drive. So there's, there's not anything close by that is useful to the people that live on the east side of the county, all the way from the Jackson city limits to the Chester County and the Henderson County line. And we're stuck kinda in that corner of the county where Henderson County and Madison County come together and, and Chester County. And, and people are getting so frustrated that I'm hearing comments like, well, why don't they just draw a line between Jackson and, and Beach Bluff and just give it to one of the other counties? Maybe they want it, it doesn't look like Madison County does. So people are getting frustrated.
The motion on the floor is, you've got a plan to make this revenue neutral, I believe.
Yes, sir.
If you'll give us that plan, we can vote on this and move right on with it.
Okay. Alright, what we have now, attendance has, has been excellent up until this virus hit us. We have dance classes, martial arts classes, which we plan to continue. A group of young people has been coming regularly from inside the city of Jackson. I don't know exactly where, I assume East Jackson. But they've been coming out and playing basketball regularly, so it's used not just by the Beach Bluff community. People are even coming from Jackson out there to use it. The numbers are increasing and we got swatted by this, this virus like everybody else did. So we're, what we're planning on or what we hope to do is to continue what we have and to promote more of the people that are coming for walking. We have some, some few, not a lot, but we have some that come to the inside of the gymnasium because they're, they're more comfortable there. How many places do you know that an elderly person is comfortable to come and have an inside place that they can walk and get some exercise? Even the outside, the, the area outside where the playground is, the Martha Brick walking track is, is not a user friendly place to people that have trouble walking or getting to it or taking the distance that it takes to get down to the track. So we plan to continue with a membership drive that's already started. I, I can, I can give you a list, but I'm not going to bore you with all of it, of the names that have, have sent me requests lately for memberships, we want to support, we want a membership. We've been charging $25 for those, I don't know whether that's going to wash out, if it's going to be more or what, but we, we're hoping to get those numbers at least doubled, I figured we can do better than that, but, but people have taken a new interest. And we started this back Thanksgiving when, when I was approached by a friend that told me that the Beach Bluff Rec Center was closing. And I said, well, so I went back and told the people at Beach Bluff and they started getting busy with that stuff, hopefully to, to, to pick it up. We have a live band that has committed to coming out and having dances and music. At, at either, I don't know which would work better for the, for the band sound, to have it in the gymnasium or the cafeteria. I personally think the cafeteria would work better because the gym's a big wide open place and you know how echoes are. But, but we're, we're planning on doing that. We have talked about, and up until this, until this virus hit, we had, had talked about having an outside flea market and, and nobody would take it. Well, Jimmy Henley committed to me at the last time we had an auction. He committed to me to help me get it set up. So Jimmy Henley and myself are going to try to get an outside flea market going with hopes that not only would it grow and be something like they have in some of the other places, Huntington's my model because I like to go to that one, but we're hoping to get the flea market going and maybe even if it's feasible to, to, to use some of the inside of the old building that's not being used. I understand there's a little storage being used there, but, but nothing else, so maybe we could rent some storage space or rent some places that people can keep their stuff and sell it.
Let's go, the big expense you have is for employees.
Yes.
And was Ed, Ed was you going to remove that from your budget, I think it's 39,000 you have for employees and place them with volunteers, is that still on your plan to do?
Yes, sir, the volunteers are something that we certainly have, we've got some people already that said that they would volunteer, but that's something that you have to work out as far as hours and what's going to...
Are you working on that? Ed?
Here I am, yeah, I am, I've, I've taken it out of the next year's budget. I, there's a couple of things though that I want to... Part of, part of what's in that budget is also summer camp salaries, which is about $13,500. So that's, and, and summer camp pays for itself, it brings in, last year brought in over $24,000 for the Beach Bluff location. This year it's going to be less, about probably $16,000 because we're reducing the numbers of, of that. The... A, a couple of things I'm going to bring up, one of the reasons the salaries were as much as they were, we were doing a, we, we stopped, we did a spring break camp this year, or we were doing after school program, I'm going to put it to start there. Not great attendance, they were, they were paying for it on a weekly basis, but we were having just under 10 kids there. So we altered fall break camp, winter break camp, didn't have enough to, to warrant really, and we did spring break camp. We did spring break camp, was supposed to last a week, we had about 12 kids. The spring break camp has, has morphed into spring break months. They pay $40 a week, but what's also happened is they have, it's also driven our cost up for staffing. So that's made a huge impact, no idea that we were going to go this long. And I've talked, I've been touched basically with Kim Tedford on a weekly basis about spring break. And for the number of kids that we had and childcare was considered essential service, so we did not end it. We've been doing all we can do to keep it, with the numbers and the safety and all of those things with the, the health department's guidance and recommendations, so that's, that's driven the salaries up quite a bit. Another concern I've got, I guess with, with strictly all volunteer is if you're handling money, I, I just don't feel like, feel real comfortable if there's going to be, and if it's, and if it's going to go to the county and to the general under wherever, I feel like we need to have a staff person there when, when things are open to go along with that volunteer. I've had two staff people there except for when we've had rentals and events and that's more of a safety issue. I just don't feel like, I don't feel comfortable having one person there all alone if there's nobody else in the, in the building or you're not sure. So those are some of the, the things. One of the other things I, I will make a correction on is moving the, the camp from Beach Bluff to, to Rose Hill. It was not done, the reason we did that was because you guys are meeting right now to make a recommendation. Parents have al, had already signed up months in advance and paid months in advance. And I did not want to wait until after this meeting to let parents know if we were going to have it at Beach Bluff, if we're not going to have it at all, or if we were going to move it to somewhere. So I moved, made the decision, we talked about seeing if another school would be available. Thanks to the school district and Ray Washington and Dr. McSweeney, they made Rose Hill available. I just felt it was pertinent to go ahead and notify the parents in advance so that they were not, like I said, after today, before they knew what, what they were going to be doing, were not having an option at all to go to, so...
So are you cutting 39,000 out of your budget?
39,000 right now is showing, but if we want to have summer camp, that's going to have to go back into a, a budget. But like I said, we had 13,500 originally scheduled, are there for that, but if we don't have summer camp at all at Beach Bluff or Rose Hill next year, there will be, that will be cut out completely.
So then you're not going to be, the motion on the floor is if you can become revenue neutral, but you've got a $50,000 shortfall now, so you're not willing to cut the 39,000 out and place them where volunteers are, or are you willing to do that?
I'm, I'm willing to do that, I just, what I'm saying is I don't think it's practical to say that it can be run by an all volunteer, I may be wrong if I am great, I just don't think if it's a county facility...
Are you willing to try?
That it can be run completely.
Are you willing to try?
An all volunteer.
Are you willing to try?
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever it takes.
Commissioner Wall?
Maybe Ed can answer this, but what kind of traffic, monthly traffic is he seeing on average just over the last year, I take into account obviously the last couple of months, but before that?
Well, the last numbers that I sent out to everybody was in February, we had 1,521 people that came into Bee, came to Beach Bluff and utilized it.
Ed, you realize what we're doing, we're just trying, we're not trying to shut anything down, we're trying to make it work for you and you're going to be doing some things you probably don't want to do.
I understand.
And we're doing things we don't want to do, we're just trying to find ways to make things work, so that's why we're asking you to do this. Commissioner Stevenson?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want it to be understood, we're not, I, I feel really good about Beach Bluff and the numbers that they're giving, 1,521. Just that, my concern is, is that we're not charging enough for members. I'll give you an example. Here's what is, is, I went back and looked, how many people voted in the 2016 election out there in Beach Bluff? It was a total of 541 people that had voted out in Beach Bluff. They have 111 members now. Now, I realize what Mr. Arnold's saying, they're increasing the membership...
I think they've doubled it, I think that they're doubling it right, the man that meant in Farfhouse, he said he's already doubled it and expect to have many more.
My point is, is even doubling it only brings in 5,000 something dollars. I think the thing, and, 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 we've talked about this, I think the thing that needs to be done is, I'm all for the Beach Bluff community center, I'm not going to have a problem with it, but it needs to be made, moved in the direction of being more self-sufficient. And I think there's some things that we could do to look into, like what Commissioner Davis talked about, 39,000. I mean, it's a travesty out there, we have four portals that were still on JDA and we were paying $70 a month. Am I saying that correctly? Five portals, thank you, Mr. Arnold. That's a travesty, I mean, we closed the schools and we're still paying for portals out there on utilities. That's, that is very poor. So we're going to have about $25,000 of utilities this year even keeping it open. I'm not against that, but what I'm saying is the, the way we have run that has been very, very poor and we are not in a position to continue that when we lost $56,020 in 1819. 1920 was 44,510 and this year we're looking at $51,000. Gentlemen, we got $9 million we're looking for this year, $9 million. I'm not against the community center, I want it to be a quality of life, but it needs to move in a direction where we move forward in a positive way.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, sir. I can appreciate the up and down of the numbers in the community center, but the community center was not...
Let her get a microphone, so I can hear you.
I can appreciate the up and down of the numbers at the community center. However, we know that over the years, they have been no more mismatched than we have been as a commission in where we put all 70% of our money, of the money in reassigning of limits to one department. This is a small amount of money for Beach Bluff, when reconsider all that it means to stabilize that community. My heart grieved because in many ways, my district has been affected the same way in many, if not with regard to county, with regard to the city. That center is a stabilizing element that cannot be replaced, since they have no school, they don't have a front of anything. And what you're talking about, that the community used to be is, is now, is because of the fact that there are no stabilizing effects. You want to stabilize community, draw people for interest and stuff. If we want to keep those people who contribute, their tax dollars discounting with any type of filling of exclusions, we shouldn't be messing with this center, that's a small drop in the bucket kind of money we throw around here every month. Thank you.
Commissioner Tedson? Let her break the mic back there.
I agree with everything we said about the community center with a couple of exceptions. One is, I don't think I heard anybody on the commission talking about closing it. It wasn't even discussed until we started looking at the budget and the pandemic kid and everything like that. And I, you know, these are extenuating circumstances. But when we started talking about this community center or what we were going to do with Beach Bluff three years ago, it was supposed to be revenue equal then, but it's never even gotten close. And the only thing I want you to think about is the future. Even if we get revenue equal, there's going to be some big bills coming down the road because that building's old, it's eventually going to need a roof, something's going to happen to it, air conditioning, whatever. So, you know, I just think that I'm willing to keep it open if we can get the revenue equal, but I haven't seen it happen. Commissioner Petty, wasn't it supposed to be revenue equal from the beginning?
That was the attempt to try, that was the attempt to begin with, that we were going to try to get it equalized. As anything in Parks and Recreation Department, that's a quality of life department. Nothing in the department is ever going to be where it's a money-making thing. So with, when you, when you put that thought to it, it cost us to operate to be able to have Parks and Recreation Department. So it's something that you've got to make a decision as to whether you want to provide that for the services of Madison County or do you want to not provide it unless it's making money.
Well, one last comment, and again, we want to talk about the overall budget because the budget committee tries to look at everything that, that goes across there. And we talked about this is a drip in the bucket, but we've got lots of drips to come out of that bucket this year. We just need to think about everything moving forward, we're asking the school system to cut $6 million.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Hold on, let her break the mic there.
I, I would just like to say that Beach Bluff is a small area and somebody was looking, they were looking at the number of voters... And somebody was looking, they were looking at the number of voters out there. It's, it's made up of a lot of more voters than vote right at Beach Bluff. So, anyway, I just want to say that. And we get absolutely nothing for our tax pay. Absolutely nothing. We have a state road and a federal post office and nothing else, nothing from Madison County. And we pay taxes. And we believe we deserve this. And like you said, like Mike said, you fill up a bucket of water, you take fifty thousand dollars out, fifty thousand dollars out. I think that's what was in our budget and for us. And it's like a drop in the bucket. You won't even notice that it's gone. And the other thing, I don't know how well y'all have studied this on the budget committee, but our utility bills, I got a copy of them. They run a thousand, a little over a thousand dollars a month. That's twelve thousand dollars. I looked at Rose Hills and I saw some on there that's eight thousand dollars a month. So, you know, did you think about this? We only cool and heat the gymnasium, has nothing, has fans. And that's all we heat and cool. Think about how large Rose Hill School is when you start turning on all of those utilities. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense. Fifty thousand dollars and we can't receive that. And I see a lot of people looking around like I'm crazy, but I'm not. I believe in those people out there. I don't live at Beach Bluff, but I believe in them because they've always been there. And all I ask is that y'all do this because we've had people up there since January. We've had hundreds of people up there at things. They, they've been doing a meal once a month. And we'd have one hundred or two hundred people come and they bought their meals. And just a lot of things. And so, I just wonder how deeply y'all checked into all of these because it does not make sense, fifty thousand dollars that we can't have. And that's all we get out of Madison County, taxes. So, otherwise, and I know, anyway, that's just all I'm going to say, think of this, think of something else.
Commissioner Allen.
It makes me very upset to think about this.
Commissioner Allen.
Another thing I'd like for everybody to keep in mind, you could, you could close this, probably program to close the Beach Bluff Center, right? These programs are just going to go somewhere else and still be a, a cost item. You're not going to drop any headcount, you're not going to drop any social security costs that go with hiring employees. So, you close Beach Bluff, you're still going to move this problem somewhere else where it's still losing money. Just keep that in mind. It's, it's the programs, it's not the center that's losing the money, it's the programs, okay? Some of those we asked for, some of them we didn't. So, that's, that's something I'd like y'all also consider.
Commissioner Pearson.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that with the Beach Bluff Community Center, the only advocates that they have to speak for them is the people on this county commission. I agree with the budget committee, and I just want to say, the budget committee, Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Taylor, are doing a great job in pointing out the shortfalls of our revenues when it comes down to managing accounted money. We realize that we're in, we're in a position right now to where revenues are down. We're going to have shortfalls coming from the states. We're going to have shortfalls coming from our sales tax revenue and from our hotel and motel taxes. All of this just points to the fact that we're going to have to do something beside depending on those revenues in order to balance the budget. We're starting around the solution to the problem, which we know that last year, when, when the city decided to withhold the six million dollars that was coming to the county, we took action to, to address that shortfall by having a property tax increase. And that was the first time that we had a property tax increase in twenty-four years. With all the problems that we're looking at right now, we should come to a different resolution. And the only sensible thing to do is start talking about an increase or an adjustment in our property taxes. We need another property tax increase to adjust the shortfall. You know, and when we, when we think about things like that, we need to understand that the budget committee is not our enemy. As a matter of fact, they're just addressing issues that tell us that we need additional revenue coming in. And so, for that reason, we shouldn't be asking departments to take, take a cut. We shouldn't be asking our nonprofits to not get funded. We need to be looking at addressing this problem from a sensible and a reasonable standpoint. And to me, the only way that we're going to correct this problem is by looking at a property tax increase.
What about a wheel tax?
I mean, we need, we need new revenue.
That's revenue.
It is, it is. But to me, the most sensible way to do this is through property tax. And if you all are not willing to do that, then we're going to continue to have this problem because a lot of you ran on the premise that we were going to keep property taxes low. But with everything else going up, that wouldn't, wouldn't the most logical thing to do? And so, if we make an adjustment, then that would, that would correct a lot of our problems.
Commissioner Stevenson. And we got a motion on the floor.
Couple of comments real quick before we, I appreciate what Commissioner Pearson said. A couple of comments. Mr. Arnold, I will say this. You've had the line dancing, you've had the meals and some things like that that have improved the facility out there. But we're just in a position right now, and I'm not for, I agree with Commissioner Davidson. We need to be looking at this and seeing what we can, what we could do to make this, as Commissioner Taylor said, revenue neutral or close to it. The problem that we have, I want to make sure that we understand this. I might have stepped out. I want to address what Commissioner Pearson has said. What we're doing on the budget is we're basing our budget on seventy-five percent sales tax revenue for this year. Seventy-five percent. So, that's what's cut our, cut us about nine million dollars. Now, if we come in more, the city has proposed eighty-six percent. That concerns me. That's a little high in my estimation. I would rather be ultra-conservative and come through that we have seventy-five percent of, so that lowers our sales tax revenue about the nine million that we're talking about. Also, hotel motel tax. What we've done is we cut that fifty percent. In other words, talking to Lori and I, we've down fifty percent. Now, some of y'all have driven by hotels and seen some of them, they're about ten percent. They're picking up just a smidge, but based on that for the whole year, fifty percent. We've also got business tax license. And Karen Bales on the line, I'm not asking her to comment, but they're estimating that they're going to close seventy-five thousand businesses in Madison, in Tennessee. Seventy-five thousand businesses. That's going to alleviate our, our, our sales tax. One thing to comment on, I know some of y'all are against a wheel tax, and we talked about a property tax. Want to make you aware, in Madison County, we have fifty-three percent of the residents live in rental property. My point being is, it's short-sighted just to look at property tax because what they're going to do is the owners of these properties are going to raise their rents more than whatever we propose as a property tax to cover that. So, you need to be aware of when you're looking at, we need to look at the entire picture. I understand what you're saying about a wheel tax. I know some of y'all are vehemently opposed to that. But the problem is, is we need to be looking at the whole, whole, all the way. And that's what we're doing as a committee. We're trying to look at everything that we can do. Last week, just a, just a quick example, we had, we had an opportunity, and we did this today, where we, we shut down about sixty thousand dollars on this property tax. I mean, on this, on this property insurance. Perfect example, where we need to be looking at outsourcing. We need to be looking at consolidation of services. And when I say consolidation of services, and we also need to be looking at duplication of services. That's what we're trying to do right now. Consolidation of services. Now, this is asinine to me, asinine. We just cut ours, the property insurance, from ninety thousand dollars down to thirty thousand dollars by going direct to the public. Do you know what the schools are paying for their insurance, their increase this year? From my understanding, I may be wrong, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Why on earth can we not do something to combine that, these kind of things? Now, I realize they have the school board and we have ours, but it seems asinine to me that we can't work with them on certain things. I don't care who's in charge, it's just, it's just a waste of money, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not very smart, but I can figure that out. These are kind of things that we need to be, and we're trying to look at as a budget committee, to try to come back. And what Commissioner Pearson is saying is correct. For us to make every single cut that we possibly can before we have to, like the city's done, furlough, furlough employees so we look and then we could come up with something on a tax that what we need to do and vote for.
Commissioner Taylor.
You know, being a property owner in Madison County, the last tax increase, I mean, it significantly hit us. And with the economy was down at that time, we couldn't really recoup it. But I can promise you as a landlord that a wheel tax would probably cost somebody about ten dollars a month to drive their car and provide us the revenue we need. But a property tax increase will raise their rent at least twenty-five to thirty-five dollars per month. And let me tell you, you need a roof over your head a lot more than you need a car. You can walk, you can ride bicycles, you can do whatever you want to. But I would support a wheel tax. You're exactly right. We need revenue or we need to cut expenses or a combination of the two. But in our county, nobody wants to lose anything over here. Nobody wants to give, give up any employees, but nobody wants a tax increase either. So, we just keep going down the road. And the roads run out this year.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Arnold for reference being made here on this body with regard to the significance of your population by five hundred people voting. Because quite frankly, it's an insult because only less than fifty percent of people in your district and my district vote. People are not important because of how much money they have, because they have a vested interest. With regard to budgeting and the cost-cutting, we need to take, I think the first responsible act we need to do is to freeze all budget amendments during the year. What you said as a budget don't mean anything. If you're going to come back with millions of dollars to one department, all during the year, but the least of these will have to suffer. Let's be for real, let's be, let's look this thing straight. This is oppressive. We're talking, again, if they're going to sit down, I promise I'm not going to talk on this anymore. This is too little money when we know that we're always doing is treating people like they're insignificant. They're not being treated fair, equal. This is small what we're dealing with. We set budgets and we come back here and who we like and who, who we, who we want to support. Give them all the money in the world, they're going to make everybody else pay. That's wrong.
Commissioner Pearson. Y'all talking a lot.
I just want to point out the fact that if we're looking at the Beach Bluff Community Center to be revenue-positive, where they got money coming in to take care of their expenses, that's not going to happen. And we're talking about closing Beach Bluff Community Center because they're not revenue proficient. But at the same time, we put millions of dollars in their training center out there for the share, and there's never going to be revenues on that basis. So, when, when you compare apples to apples, you know, until you get to a point to where a lot of these agencies, you realize the services that they provide is going to be more important than the amount of money that they bring in, then we're going, we're going to always have these kind of discussions. So, I think with that being, being, being in mind, that there shouldn't even be an issue in closing the Beach Bluff Community Center because they're providing the service out there, just like the jail or the sheriff is providing the service for their training center, but neither one of them is going to bring in enough revenue to cover their expenses.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I just wanted to-
No, no, that's Johnson right here.
Mr. Chairman, can what you and Mr. Arnold have suggested be accomplished with a motion that's on the floor?
Is that-
I call for question.
Did you hear that motion, Ed?
Yes, I hear.
And you agree with that?
Yes, I mean, I don't know enough about what his plan is to say wholeheartedly either way. I mean, it's, I, 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 I'll be glad to work with him on it. I just don't know enough on the details. I mean, it's-
Well, you know, what you work-
Things are sort of vague is as far as I'm, can know right now.
I'm unclear on what the motion is as well. Are we voting to make the Beach Bluff Center revenue-neutral based on a plan to have volunteers operate it? Because I have concerns that would be a major liability for the county, but that's what we're voting on.
You got thirty-nine thousand dollars in salaries.
We're voting to remove that money from the Beach Bluff Center. Is that what, I don't understand what the motion was.
That would be in Ed's budget, yeah.
Okay. So, what, what, can we restate the motion?
Can I get some clarification?
Yeah, you can. Restate your motion.
My motion was to leave the center open and for these people to take the same cut that other people have taken. And my intent after hearing you and Mr. Arnold talk is to encompass what you're both of you have talked about and try to work it out. I know it's not ironclad today, but we'll have to work through this. That's the reason I called for questions.
You understand that, Ed?
I, I think I do, but I've still got a few questions. I mean, part, part of it is, when we take out completely salaries or we may say it, we're not going to have summer camp anymore because some of the salaries, some of that money-
No, I think what we're saying, Ed, is you're in charge out there. We're asking you to see if you can work your way through this. If everybody gets on board with it, give it your best shot, see what happens.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than willing to, you know, do that. I, I just, you know, there's got to be some parameters to-
There's got to be some leadership, there's got to be some leadership there.
Nothing's going to operate completely of making money. I mean, it's, that's just, there's, I don't know if in recreation center, community center, anywhere. Now, some make more than others, but I don't know any that are profit-making.
Well, it's not about making, what, what you're trying to do, Ed, is trying to overcome some of the shortfalls that you've got, and I think that could be done.
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I thought this was this-
We got a motion.
I thought this motion to close the Beach Bluff.
No, keep it open.
Bobby?
Keep it open.
Let's keep it open.
Yeah.
Close it and keep it open.
That's why we go, we voted on.
Huh?
We voted to keep it open.
Keep it open, yeah.
That's the motion on the floor, roll call. Main motion is to keep it open.
And with, like you said, cuts, that would be one of them.
No, you said, I'm about there, just keep it open.
Well, that'd be a bad submit. Hold it, hold it, then hold it. Hold it, hold it, then hold it. Hold it.
The motion is to keep the facility open with the same budget cuts as other departments are being asked to take. So the, the cuts are not up to Mr. Smith. It's, the motion encompasses the cuts that other departments are taking.
Well, it'll become up his budget.
I understand, but it's, the motion is that the cuts will be the same as those coming from other departments in the upcoming budget year.
Oh, that, my was gonna ask, how can one department cut affect another department?
I'm not passing judgment on the propriety of the motion one way or the other. I'm just saying the motion that was made was to keep the facility open with the proviso that it be subject to the same budget cuts as other departments are being asked to undertake.
So just to clarify, a yes vote would be to keep the Beach Bluff Recreation Center open with a three percent budget cut. A no vote would be to close the Beach Bluff Recreation Center.
Call for a vote.
Roll call.
Could I?
Roll call.
Alexander, yes. Arnold, yes. Beckham, no. Franklin?
Yes.
Brown Fodden, yes. Brown Scott, yes. Brian?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Compton?
No.
Deaton?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Gobbins?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Johnson, Arthur?
Yes.
Johnson, Barton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mercer?
Yes.
Monique?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Fang?
Fairman?
Yes.
Stevenson?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Wall?
Yes.
Anybody wanna change their vote? Nineteen, yes, and five, no, one out, and motion passed.
Thank you all.
This is Ed, Ed, could I?
Yes, Ed, go ahead.
All right, Ray. Um, I, I wanted to get some clarification. My, I cut my budget over three percent. Beach Bluff is in part of Parks and Recreation. I cut my budget over three percent. And if we're not, and we haven't addressed the grant, if that goes away, that's way more than three percent. So I had cut, I cut my budget more than three percent. Beach Bluff is included in Parks and Recreation in the total budget. So I just wanna get that straight.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor?
That's why, that's why I would say the three members of the Budget Committee voted no, because they had cut more than the three percent. The problem that we have is with all the uncertainty of revenue and things like that. In other words, running these day camps, running these day camps and things, we didn't know we were gonna even have day camps to have people to do that. Ed has actually proposed, if I remember correctly, like a ten percent, a ten percent reduction. So three percent is actually adding seven percent back in his budget.
Well, it sounds like he got an opportunity to show us he can do it. I'm looking forward to the business session. How about that?
My budget is.
Good. So Ed, you got a good challenge on your plate, so make it work.
Mr. Chairman, the mayor was in charge of the last Financial Management Committee meeting, everybody presenting the budget amendment.
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say, and I'm a very caring person, but this is not the first time this has happened. Every year, they tell us that we're not gonna get the money to go to the schools.
But we are voting, Barbara, we.
I know, and it makes me sad. It's not.
But you're sad with what you.
I'm, I'm, I'm very happy right now. But every year, why do we have to bice them over there?
I don't know, we'll check, we'll check it out next year.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Gary, so much.
Okay, we got masks for everybody who wants one. Okay, we under item number twenty, any amendments transfers of general funds, schools, department capital projects, highway department, debt service, GM and ICOR service, budgets from fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Mayor Harris will handle.
Okay. Fund one forty-five, general purpose schools, this is new money. Contributions, this amendment adds a contribution from Southern Management Services LLC to be used for student scholarship. Committee recommendation?
Committee recommendation, no second required. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Number two, eight thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars. This amendment transfers funding from the software account to the materials and supplies account to be used towards general maintenance and repair work. Committee recommendation?
Committee recommendation, no second required. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Number three, twenty-eight thousand dollars school board and office superintendent. This amendment transfers funds from the diesel fuel account to cover additional legal fees that may be incurred through year-end consulting services to be provided by the incoming superintendent. Committee recommendation?
Committee recommendation, no second required. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Show me how to pass.
Not passed.
Number, number four, two thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. This is new money and insurance recovery funds received from wind damage to Southside High School. Committee recommendation?
Committee recommendation, no second required. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Number five, one thousand four hundred, I'm sorry, one million four hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars in new money. This amendment will appropriate fund balance to use toward the following projects. Mason repair at Lincoln Elementary, parking improvements, additional parking at Nova Early Learning, secure entrances at schools, additional classrooms and restrooms at Community Montessori, and additional parking at Lincoln Elementary. As remaining funds allow, they will be used towards the identified list of other potential projects. Let me say, Mr. Chairman, that this budget amendment was changed during the Financial Management Committee meeting. It was reduced to not take as many of these, that fund balance. So all of these projects were listed on the original request by the school system. So it, it may be bits and pieces of these, of these projects shown in the amendments, but it is a committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required. Any other discussion? Commissioner Arnold?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where we are on that. I do think we need a little discussion and input, maybe. Is this, some of this was cut outright? And, and what comes to my mind first is JCT, the school board on, on Whitehall, I believe, Jackson Technology, and also West Bemis. Are, are those the two that?
Mr. Arnold, I, I can't tell you of the, because Ray Washington talked about the things they.
Come here, Ray, Ray's on the phone.
Yeah.
Ray, you wanna go ahead and discuss that?
Yeah, so we had been trying to work through, I guess, Division twenty twenty locker rooms at JCT and West Bemis, which is amounted to about two million dollars during Financial Management, and even before then, we talked about the upcoming needs at Madison and JCM, which are being worked on right now. So we're trying to accumulate funds to make sure we finish those, those projects out properly. If in fact we can get all this done, we will reinstate the JCM and West Bemis project as soon as we can. So we had to make an adjustment, given COVID and the short fund in capital that we're anticipating also, so that we can make sure we have projects completed that are underway before we started these two more significant new projects that have been pending for several years. So like everybody said, we gotta make a lot of tough decisions, but we thought it'd be more prudent to make sure that we had the funds to complete those schools as that amounts to about four point eight million dollars that we need to make sure we have everything we need in those schools with furnishing, technology, and things of that nature to work towards that. And then as far as becoming available, these will be the next two projects that we would take care of. So that's how we came to that conclusion.
Well, with all respect, that's not a very good decision to come to. As you mentioned, this was Vision twenty twenty, that was five years ago. The school board superintendent came up with priority list, and even as a, at the priority list, the JCT School and West Bemis was way down on the list. We spent millions of dollars. In fact, I understand that this was supposed to be done this summer, this, this project at JCT and West Bemis. With the priority list, to me, priority means somewhere close to the top. What you're proposing is to use this money for something next year or even the following year. When this commission voted to borrow, what, how much money? Third or fourth billion? Dog or dog? Uh, schools, right now, we borrowed over forty million dollars to take care of the priority list. That's what we're talking about, the priority list. That forty-two million that we borrowed was to take care of these things from Vision twenty twenty. Uh, these, these, the Madison School was not even on the list. Uh, and now we're proposing moving this money forward in a year or more to fund it. We don't need to do that. Uh, these schools we're talking about are middle schools with no way to have their athletic games, or practice, or showering, or lockers. It's something that has to be done. We don't need to put it off. And I said, did our capital committee have something to do with this, Jason? Finance committee took care of?
Yeah, it didn't, capital, it did not come from the capital.
Okay. I just think it would've gone through capital.
No, I spoke to the Financial Management Committee, Mr. Arnold, about this, I guess during that, um, during that meeting as to where we were with capital and where we were going with capital. And so truly, we want JCT and West Bemis to have locker rooms also, so make no mistake about that. As far as priorities, we re, we re-prioritize every year, really every six months, on what needs to be done because things change, all right? So we definitely want to make sure that we get these locker rooms done. It's been pending for, you know, I guess, five years. I don't, I don't know when it began. I think it was with Vision twenty twenty, I guess, and money wasn't appropriated at that time. We've been working, trying to make everything work within the priorities. A hundred and forty-eight million on the schools thirty years or more, and all the additions that we need to make to our current schools that are less than thirty years. So we, we diligently try to work through this every time we're appropriating money to make sure we're getting the most out of it and spending it where it needs to be spent the most. And that's just where we are. If we had the capital money to do all of it, we'd do it, but we don't.
Oh, Mr. Washington, you have the money. We borrowed the money to do it. That's, that's not, that's not the question at this point. If you look on down the list of what you're proposing to spend the money for, this part by far is for parking lots. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I, I sure hope this commission does not.
Arnold, if you.
I'm sorry?
If you look, if, if, if the money you look at for parking lot is, is middle school, and yes, we do need, and I brought that up to the commission and other committees many times. It didn't reach the level of priority back then, uh, because we were more prioritizing roofs and other things, but these parking lots are needed. We have a terrible situation with parking lots, not just existing, but ones that need to be created at our schools. We're in bad shape.
Mr. Washington, if I could.
All over the district, even central office. We're in terrible shape with parking lots.
I, I understand. If I could read, uh, this, this is the, what the educational money capital was supposed to be built? I'll, I'll read it, I'll read it as, as you all printed it. The amendment will appropriate fund balance to use toward the following projects. Locker room additions at West Bemis and JCT Middle School, mason repair at Lincoln, parking room improvements and additional parking at Nova Elementary, secure entrances of schools, additional classrooms, and restrooms at Community Montessori, and additional parking at Lincoln Elementary.
Yes, sir.
You know, what I put as a priority on there, certainly not parking lots. We've got kids, we're talking about in the school, that need locker space and, and the opportunity to participate.
Yes, sir, like I said, I was asked to look at this amendment.
I'll, I'll move it to our commission.
And see if we could move money within this amendment to help compensate for upcoming shortfall. I would love to do it all.
Do what we need to do, that's what we need to do.
I would love to not have to change the amendment. I didn't wanna have to change the amendment, okay? But that's just where we are. I didn't wanna have to change the amendment, but that's where we are.
It's been there since two thousand sixteen.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Now that we know what we're voting on. You wanna restate that?
Yeah, we're.
Mayor?
The amount of the amendments, one million four hundred and sixty-three thousand six ninety-three, will appropriate fund balance to use towards the following projects. Mason repair at Lincoln Elementary, parking improvements and additional parking at Nova Early Learning Center, secure entrances at schools, additional classrooms and restrooms at Community Montessori, and additional parking at Lincoln Elementary. As remaining funds allow, they will be used towards the identified list of other potential projects. And it was a committee recommendation.
Roll call.
Can I get a form of clarification just before, before I vote? This, this amendment is with regards to parking, we saw what it was, the parking lots and things of that nature. Did we ever allocate money for locker rooms and things of that nature? Before I voted, I was gonna say, Mr. Washington, uh, uh, if we already allocated money in previous years, I know that twenty twenty in concept was low, but I don't know if, if we had made a commitment, uh, do you, can you enlighten us on why that money is not there? Or why the word wasn't done?
Let him ask. Go ahead, Ray.
We had never appropriated funds to do these locker rooms until at this time, all right? So it wasn't like something that was appropriated before, back in fifteen or sixteen, when Vision, Vision, Vision twenty twenty occurred. Money was never appropriated for these locker rooms, ever. And so we've been trying to work to get to that point. We thought we were at that point this year with this budget amendment, but then other things have taken place that have said that, that to me, no, no other project on that list amounts to the amount of money of these two projects. So if there was something that had to be moved, that would be the identified projects that we can move to the following year. All right? So this is the first time we've ever talked about appropriating money for these projects in the five years that this situation has gone on. I don't remember any other discussion, as I've been here three years, where we've had money for JCT and West Bemis locker rooms, although the need has existed since it became middle schools over five years ago. So we've not appropriated money before.
Commissioner Arnold?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Sheriff Lieutenant Washington. You may not have been here when all this came about. We borrowed the forty-two million dollars to take care of the priority list that the school board came up with for these schools. These two schools have been on there all this time. These students have done without the things that they need. And what you are recommending here is taking the money that was appropriated for the priority list to take care of this, move it to a school that's not even built yet. And we're gonna go ahead and build a parking lot?
And Commissioner Arnold, I, I didn't wanna change a thing, all right?
We don't need to.
I'm trying to work with the body, the Financial Management Committee and Budget Committee to make decisions to help us move forward through our capital need, all right? That's what I'm trying to do.
Everybody understand what you're voting on?
I'm not arguing. I'm not arguing with you. I would love to do, but if I can't, then I can't. I would love to do, but if I can't, then I can't.
Restate it one more time, Jim.
Yeah.
Would like everybody else to know what you're voting on.
One million four hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars will appropriate fund balance to use towards the following projects. Mason repair at Lincoln Elementary, parking improvements and additional parking at Nova Early Learning Center, secure entrances at schools, additional classrooms and restrooms at Community Montessori, and additional parking at Lincoln Elementary. As remaining funds allow, it will be used towards the identified list of other potential projects.
Alright, roll call.
Good morning. Arnold.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Brown Claudel.
Yes.
Brown Scott.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Counton.
Yes.
Diggs.
Yes.
Ellison.
Yes.
Calvin.
Yes.
Hale.
Yes.
Johnson Arthur.
Yes.
Johnson Barber.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Montague.
Yes.
Pearson.
No.
Petty.
Yes.
Fang.
Spearman.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Anybody want to change their vote? Motion passes.
Just trying to make sure Billy Martin's list lines up with what you have up there, Doc. Okay, we're in-house amendments. Number six A, forty-four hundred dollars, general purpose instructional furniture purchases for preparation of additional classes at Community Montessori. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation on second required, do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Six B, thirty-six hundred twenty-nine dollars, general purpose technology, cabling repairs required at South Side due to storm damage. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation on second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Six C, two thousand dollars, general purpose health services. Funds are being moved to cover the lift contract renewal. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation on second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Okay, move to number seven, fire department. These are insurance recoveries slash refunds, thirty-three hundred fifty-one dollars twenty-three cents reimbursement for deployment. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Number eight, maintenance, two thousand ninety-one dollars eighty-five cents. Sold eight estate parks, pots for nineteen hundred twenty-three dollars seventy-five cents, putting money into building improvements, also sold scrap metal for one hundred sixty-eight dollars ten cents and putting money into maintenance and repair for service vehicles. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Have one, no. Doug Seales.
Number nine.
Hold on, hold on.
On this particular item, number nine, or let's say number eight, that we just voted on, but I got a question. Some of the other departments have also done the same thing by selling some items and everything. We would not let them roll that back into their budget, we make them roll that into the general fund. I'm just wondering why we're going second on this one right here.
Which one was that?
Number eight.
Number eight?
My, my memory, Commissioner, was that there was a, something like an eighteen hundred dollar repair bill on a vehicle he had, uh, that was, I mean, way more than he anticipated, but there was, that's my memory of the reason this was allowed to go through like it is.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, sir. If I'm not mistaken, just three meetings ago, we took actions that would require that any properties or products purchased by the county with tax bills dollars, if they were sold, that money went back to the general fund. Why, uh, why is this different? What, you know, what, you know?
What?
Anything about, and, and, and I'm, I'm sure that I'm not going to break with, with the members just three months. It was like that before, and we had gotten off of it, and this was getting back on track. If it's vote with county money, the value is owned by the county, and it will go back into general fund, and the person wanted it, the public wanted it, they were requested by amendment and come back out. Again, that's a violation of our rules. Why are we having this discussion?
There, Karen.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
The financial management committee did change that amendment. Somehow the verdict remained the same, but if you look at the actual amendment, it is going back into general fund, and the financial management did take action that all monies would go back into the fund for which the sales took place, whether it be juvenile, general fund, capital, so that action was taken, Commissioner Brown.
It's going back to general fund.
Okay. Excuse me, I understand that your answer was that it's going back to general fund, but if, can you roll that back up there? I think that's supposed to say new money?
Yeah.
From an agency, I mean, to an agency, is that not right?
That's okay. He sold some pots.
And that money's going back to general fund?
Yeah.
That's the rules, thank you.
Good ear, Brown. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, number nine, maintenance, forty-five hundred dollar sale of equipment to replace money moved from building improvements last month. That was committee recommendation, and Karen, was that another one that the money goes back to general fund, fund balance?
Do you hear that, Karen?
That is correct, it's going back on the general fund.
Okay, uh, committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Juvenile court clerk refund check for paying, I'm sorry, twenty-nine hundred thirty, twenty-nine hundred dollars thirty-eight cents, refund check for paying off copier lease. There again, Karen, is that going, is that going back into general fund?
It's going back into juvenile fund.
Juvenile, okay. Committee recommendation.
That is the general fund, that one is general fund.
So it's going back to general fund. Okay, committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It'll pass.
It'll pass.
Okay, number eleven, health department, P H E P, five thousand fifty dollars seventy-seven cents. This is increased revenue for Nashville tornado deployment for overtime for two employees FEMA will reimburse. Increased other salaries, excuse me, other salaries and wages line for the three employees working COVID-19 pandemic on Good Friday. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion?
Is this going into the general fund also?
No.
Then why?
This goes into special purpose fund.
Special purpose fund. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Alright, number twelve, forty-four hundred forty-two dollars, circuit court clerk, moving money to cover salaries and debt collections, collections of office. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Circuit court clerk, nineteen thousand dollars, and due to pandemic, this money is being used for extra computer needs approved by state audit. This is, as I understand it, funds from a special designative fund from circuit, circuit court, correct, Karen?
That is correct.
Yep. Uh, committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Alright, number fourteen, veteran services, a thousand dollars, purchasing new computer for James Turner, three office chair. I, I think this, this is specifically just to purchase a new, um, computer. And I think the other part of that was stricken out, was it not, Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, committee.
Mr. Mayor, the, uh, computer can be taken out as well. Matt Preston said he had funds in his budget that would take care of that, so there's no need for this amendment at this time.
So we need to?
No vote, sir.
Okay. Alright, number fifteen, sheriff's department, eighteen thousand three hundred eight dollars and thirty cents, transferring gov deal sales to maintenance expense and court security grants, reimbursement to salary expense, SRO lobbying, game overtime, and transferring insurance recovery for lightning, uh?
Damages.
What, what?
Damages.
Damages, oh, can't read that. Um, Karen, what was the disposition of this money?
This will also go back into the general fund, and anytime they sell from gov deals, it will also now go into general fund.
Okay. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Number twenty, uh, number sixteen, sheriff's department, twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, general fund, moving additional in-service training from state to cost center budget. Uh, committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Number seventeen, sheriff's department, seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, recording highway safety grant modifications approved by Tennessee on March twenty-seventh and March thirtieth, twenty twenty. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Number eighteen, parks declaration, twelve thousand dollars, move monies from PT personnel salaries to utilities. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Number nineteen, health department, school-based oral disease prevention, six thousand two hundred dollars, part-time hygienist, working more hours due to COVID-19. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Health department, I'm pretty certain this is the chant grant, yep. Uh, sixteen hundred dollars, transferring from salaries and wages line to the part-time line. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Health department, clinical immunizations, thirty-three hundred dollars, charging bank charges to this account. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Twenty-two, health department, convenience centers, twenty thousand one hundred dollars, multi-reparies to trash trucks, employee elected retirement waste management assisted with trash loads due to truck driver out on OJI turnovers with the convenience center attendance and travel canceled due to COVID-19. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Health department, thirty-five thousand dollars, savings and salary pension due to long-term retired RN in July twenty nineteen, a part-time building maintenance employee, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred and four and forty-eight thousand six twenty-three, moved to account one twenty, one-two-one, move dollars to maintenance and repair building line for fence, for garage, and other upkeeps. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Health department, granting aid, nine thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars ninety-three cents, adjusting to year-end estimates and refunding Tennessee Department of Health. Committee recommendation.
No second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. And, uh, Steve, you have, you have something to bring up, do you not?
Uh, there are, there are a couple of resolutions. Steve, you're on the board also. Okay. Uh, there are a couple of resolutions, which I understand, I was, I came from finance committee, but in any event, it's going to take a two-thirds vote to suspend these because they were not on the agenda. So, uh, the first is a resolution approving a copier lease for the fire department.
Make a motion if we suspend the rules.
Say it. A motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wall, Steve Wall. Any opposed?
None.
Okay, and then you want to vote on that, Mr. Chairman?
On the motion?
Yes, sir, you voted to suspend the rules. If you'll vote to approve the resolution, I'll leave.
They have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Brown, who's second?
Thank you.
I have a second for Commissioner, other Brown. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Pass.
Commissioner Taylor, pass.
Alright, this second resolution will also require motion to suspend the rules is, it was submitted, but I don't think it's on the agenda. It's a resolution to request funding in accordance with provisions of Tennessee Public Chapter six sixty-seven, Title three dash twenty-two, items ten point thirty-three dash thirty-four. Uh, this was, I was asked to prepare this, but the substance may be something that Karen can address better.
They have a motion to suspend the rules?
I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second, by Commissioner Brown. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Karen, do you want to address this resolution?
Sir, uh, this is the money that Governor Lee has allocated for counties and cities to request as of July one. We must have a resolution that is adopted showing the allocation of the funds, and the total amount of the funds is going to be one million two hundred fifty-six dollars and nine, fifty-six nine hundred and six dollars, with seven seventy-five, two thirty-six being used for the fire department for breathing apparatus, and four hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars being used for school lessons.
Motion.
So who?
Motion by Commissioner Health, by Commissioner Wall. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Thank you. Does that conclude everyone?
That's, that's, as far as I know, that's all the amendments unless Karen has anything additionally. Do you want to try to get a short report from her, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I do. Karen, would you like to give us your report on anything?
Well, as you all know and have heard this morning, we're diligently working on the budget, trying to do the best we can on the projection of revenues. Uh, for tomorrow's meeting, we've gone back and we've actually prepared budgets where it'll show seventy-five, eighty-five, and ninety-five percent reduction so that we can look at it all three ways. Uh, again, we will not have the March income tax, I mean, sales tax figures for sure until the twentieth, which we just Wednesday, and as soon as I get that information, we'll be sending it out to you. Uh, working with the school system, um, trying to prepare their budget with the shortfalls, trying to do the best we can, and hoping that we'll know more regarding maintenance effort and the mandatory raises for elected officials once that the legislature reconvenes on June the first. So kind of in a wait-and-see position right now and doing the best we can with the information we're obtaining daily.
Alright, thank you very much, Karen. Item twenty-one, the election of no republics.
So who?
A motion by Commissioner Brown. Second by, who's second, Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
We, uh, we need to have a client.
Attorney-client.
Attorney-client, private meeting, Commissioner.
Before we have an attorney-client meeting, um, I, I do need to move to suspend the
Before we have an attorney-client meeting, um, I, I do need to move to suspend the rules. Uh, we need to approve the, uh, highway department to construct a gravel parking area behind the election commission.
That's right.
Um, so I'd, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules.
Have a motion to suspend the rules, and I have a second by Mr. Hell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Now, we've already voted to fund this. What we're voting on is to, to allow the highway department to do the work. That's the motion.
And I'd make that motion to allow the highway department to go, to construct that parking area, and I think bar's on the line if anybody has any questions or any.
Motion by Commissioner Bush, second by Commissioner Wall. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Now, we need to have a attorney-client, private meeting. If you're not a part of the commission, I guess you'll have to vacate the room.
So, we'll need to disconnect.
Disconnect the phone line, too. Sorry, voters.